I'm going to call to order the, um, this meeting of the Harris Township Board of Supervisors. We're going to start off with a couple of public hearings. Um, the hearing for ordinance three eighty-two will not be held today. We're still working on that. We've been working on this. Um, along the same lines that I, well, just as a reminder, um, as we conduct these public hearings, the purpose is to offer the public the opportunity to, um, tell us what they think, um, share their views. It's our job during a public hearing is to listen and hear what you have to say. So the public hearing is not a debate. It's an opportunity for people to let us know what they think.
Do you want to say anything?
I didn't read it.
Okay, so please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Okay, our first public hearing is on proposed ordinance three seventy-nine repealing the corridor overlay district standards and establishing comprehensive landscaping requirements.
Proposed ordinance number three seventy-nine would repeal standards for properties located within the corridor overlay district and establish comprehensive landscaping and screening requirements for commercial and industrial uses. The proposed ordinance is a result of an analysis by the Planning Commission, which recommended repealing the corridor overlay district standards and consolidating landscaping and screening regulations in a new standalone ordinance. Currently landscaping requirements are found in multiple ordinance sections that are not consistent. Several requirements contained within the existing corridor overlay district would be relocated to other sections of chapter eleven or chapter twelve. The proposed screening requirements would apply to all subdivision land development and site plans when a commercial or industrial use adjoins a residential zoning district. Landscaping requirements would apply to all proposed non-residential land development and site plans. The standards would not apply to residential or agricultural uses. The proposed ordinance was reviewed by the Center Regional Planning Commission on August seventh, two thousand and twenty-five.
Would anybody like to address, um, this ordinance? Okay, I'm going to call to order the, um, this meeting of the Harris Township Board of Supervisors. Uh, we're going to start off with a couple of public hearings. Um, the hearing for ordinance three eighty-two will not be held today. We're still working on that. We've been working on this. Um, along the same lines that I, well, just as a reminder, um, as we conduct these public hearings, the purpose is to offer the public the opportunity to, um, tell us what they think, um, share their views. It's our job during a public hearing is to listen and hear what you have to say. So the public hearing is not a debate. It's an opportunity for people to let us know what they think.
Did you want to say anything?
I didn't read it.
Okay, so please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Okay, our first public hearing is on proposed ordinance three seventy-nine repealing the corridor overlay district standards and establishing comprehensive landscaping requirements.
Proposed ordinance number three seventy-nine would repeal standards for properties located within the corridor overlay district and establish comprehensive landscaping and screening requirements for commercial and industrial uses. The proposed ordinance is a result of an analysis by the Planning Commission, which recommended repealing the corridor overlay district standards and consolidating landscaping and screening regulations in a new standalone ordinance. Currently landscaping requirements are found in multiple ordinance sections that are not consistent. Several requirements contained within the existing corridor overlay district would be relocated to other sections of chapter eleven or chapter twelve. The proposed screening requirements would apply to all subdivision land development and site plans when a commercial or industrial use adjoins a residential zoning district. Landscaping requirements would apply to all proposed non-residential land development and site plans. The standards would not apply to residential or agricultural uses. The proposed ordinance was reviewed by the Center Regional Planning Commission on August seventh, two thousand and twenty-five.
Would anybody like to address, um, this ordinance?
If you can make a motion, Richard.
Okay, all in favor of adjourned? We're adjourned. Okay, um, proposed ordinance three eighty, amendments to the property maintenance and fire code.
Before I read that, Mr. Chair, I just want to make sure folks online can hear. I got a text from someone who said they were unable to hear, so I just wanted to make sure that there's no issues with the audio this evening. If anyone online can let us know if they're hearing us. Put your hand up. Yeah, I got a thumbs up there from Brad Holesworth, so. Uh, sorry, just getting a text here from, okay, it looks like they are hearing us. Maybe it was just an isolated individual that could not, so.
All right.
I'll go ahead and read this, uh, public hearing agenda language. Proposed ordinance number three eighty would amend the Center Region Rental Housing and Building Safety Code, known as chapter ten, article three, property maintenance and fire code, by amending the definition for residential rental property and the requirement to obtain a housing permit. A residential rental property would include any building or portion thereof which is offered for rent or lease as a living facility for one or more consecutive days. Existing exemptions within the definition would not be changed. No person, firm, or corporation would be permitted to operate or rent another, to another, or provide for residential occupancy for one or more consecutive days, any dwelling unit or rooming unit, until a housing permit has been issued by the code official. The existing requirement for a housing permit is thirty days.
Anybody like to speak to this ordinance?
Would you adjourn?
We're adjourned. Okay, proposed ordinance three eighty-one, amending the zoning ordinance related to short-term rental uses.
Proposed ordinance number three eighty-one would amend multiple sections of chapter twelve zoning to include a definition and use regulations for short-term rentals and permit short-term rentals as an accessory use in multiple zoning districts. Chapter twelve, article two, section two point four A would be amended to include use regulations for short-term rentals. The section states that the use shall be owner-occupied and an accessory use to the principal use on the property. It also states that non-owner-occupied short-term rentals operating as of the effective date of the ordinance shall be determined to be not a non-conforming use, the transference of which is subject to the Harris Township Short-Term Rental Ordinance. Chapter twelve, article eleven, section eleven point two would be amended to include a definition for short-term rental. A short-term rental is defined as any dwelling unit or portion thereof utilized for overnight lodging for a period of, of one, not less than one day, nor more than twenty-nine consecutive days, and two, not more than a hundred and twenty days per calendar year. Short-term rental facilities do not include a hotel, motel, bed and breakfast, or farm stay as such terms are used and defined in chapter twelve zoning. The proposed ordinance would also amend the use charts for the agricultural, natural areas, agricultural residential, rural centers, single-family residential, two-family residential, multifamily residential, village and village commercial zoning districts to list short-term rentals as a permitted accessory use. The proposed ordinance was reviewed by the Center Regional Planning Commission on October ninth, two thousand and twenty-five, and the Center County Planning and Community Development Office on October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Okay, would anybody like to speak to this? Ordinance three eighty-one, please.
I just want to thank the board for all the work they've done on this. There's been a lot of differing sides to this ordinance. Uh, it's been anywhere from full use, you know, in a residential house, non-occupied in the current state, which is effectively a hotel, to just people renting now and then. But I think all your hard work is showing in the ordinance you're putting together.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you.
Could you please identify yourself for the record?
Uh, Mike Gabrosic.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to address this ordinance?
Move to adjourn.
Okay, without objection, we are adjourned. Okay.
Three eighty-two is off the agenda, correct?
Yeah, but we're on the three eighty-one.
We just did three eighty-one.
Oh, three, oh, just, okay, this is a, I see. All right, three eighty-two, we've removed from the agenda. So that is our public hearings. I'll call to order the regular meeting of the November tenth Harris Township Board of Supervisors. I will let you know that we're reversing the discussion of, uh, items E and F on the, on the agenda to facilitate our discussion. And item G has been removed from the agenda. Pardon? G.
G?
Oh, G, I'll take this.
Amending the township to its G schedule?
Yeah.
Why?
Because we didn't, we didn't pass the others. How can we do a schedule we aren't passing?
Okay, gotcha.
Okay, um, so next item would be the approval of the minutes.
Second.
Any discussion amendment? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The minutes have been approved. Citizen comments. Here is where we invite people to, um, make comments on any item that is not on the agenda for today. So if somebody would like to bring something before us that is not on today's agenda, we'd be happy to hear about it. Okay, seeing none? Okay, um, new agenda items. So Pennsylvania Act sixty-five requires the posting of agendas, um, within twenty-four hours. We can add an item to the agenda if it's an emergency. We can item, add a, add an item to the agenda if it is very minimal in nature and particularly does not involve the expenditure of funds. Now, does anybody on the board want to add something to the agenda? Okay, moving on, township business. Introduction of the new CADA executive director.
All right, so this evening we have, uh, two representatives from CADA, Mr. David Rischel and, uh, Todd, I'm going to probably forget your last name.
Horstley.
Horstley, thank you, Mr. Todd Horstley. And they have a PowerPoint presentation that I'm going to go about sharing here. So give me one second to get that started. And, go ahead and put this up here on the screen. One second to start the presentation.
While he's bringing that up, I'll just say, Mr. Chair, thank you very much for the opportunity to talk with you here tonight. And, uh, this is actually my final act as CEO of CADA. After this presentation, I will be done, and Todd will be the man in charge. Uh, we want to talk with you a little bit tonight about, uh, services over the last couple of years, uh, some how we've been performing, some initiatives we're doing, and then I'll give you a chance to meet Todd and ask him any questions you might have. Next slide, please. So I arrived here in two thousand and twenty-three, as you may remember. Really had three goals as my role as kind of a extended interim CEO of CADA. It was to stabilize and improve our services, balance our budget, and enhance our revenue, get our financial situation stabilized, and then strengthen the organization and the workforce. And I will tell you a little bit about some of the things we focused on. Next slide, please. So for stabilizing and improving the service, um, we really did a big focus on redesigning our routes and really all of our services, including our CATA GO services. For our fixed route system, you probably recall that we had a chronic driver shortage, and we really were having trouble covering all of our routes. And we did a pretty big redesign of what we were going to be able to cover with the drivers that we had available. Um, and that's been pretty successful. Our on-time performance increased ten percent or better on most of our routes. Our complaints from passengers were down more than thirty percent. And ridership has been up from five to twenty-five percent on the different routes that we've, um, changed. And we've hit the five million rider mark, which is the first time since COVID that we've been able to provide that many rides. So, um, our, our bus network system is, uh, um, stable again. We're also working to improve our bus stops. Uh, we have a, an assessment we just did of all of our bus stops to determine if they're in good condition and if they're accessible for folks with disabilities. And this is a program that's going to be multi-year. We're taking a look at improvements that we need to make. Uh, you probably saw in the Center Region, we put up new bus stop signs. It was the first step of the program. It's going to be continuing on in the coming years. Uh, we got new software for our CATA GO service, which residents here in Harris Township have been using and have been giving us very positive feedback about. Um, we expanded our CATA GO service substantially, and we're going to be expanding it even further in the coming years. Um, and our on-time performance for our on-demand services, both of our, both our CATA GO service and our CATA Ride Service for passengers with disabilities, um, remains above ninety-five percent. You know, our emphasis was trying to put the services where the passengers were and try to shorten our rides and try to just improve the system efficiency. Next slide, please. We also put a lot of focus on, uh, financial stability. Uh, working with the, with Mark and the managers, we developed a new formula that we think much more fairly allocates, um, local match in support of the state and federal monies that we get. Um, it's much more predictable now. It's much more fair. Um, it's really based on population. Uh, we also improved our revenues from our contracts we have with various apartment complexes. They provide passes to residents, and we've been able to increase revenue there, uh, more than fifteen percent. We negotiated new contracts with Penn State, and we've increased our rates that we receive from Penn State. Um, I would say with this year's budget, it's been upwards of fourteen percent. So, uh, better increases of Penn State, trying to get them to pay a larger proportion for the services that we provide on campus. Uh, we've increased our advertising rates. You may see more of our vehicles wrapped with advertising, and you're going to start seeing some of our CATA GO vehicles with some advertising on the side. That, uh, gives us very, um, needed revenue. Um, we eliminated some unsustainable contracted services, and what I'm referring there is the services that we had in Bellefonte, Benner, and Spring Townships. Um, unfortunately, those municipalities just were not able to financially support those services. And although we worked with them for more than a year to try to get them to stay in the system, they ultimately decided to leave the system. Um, we hated to see that go. That was probably one of the worst things I have ever had to do in my transit career. We don't get into transit to take service away from communities. We want to bring it in. But if they weren't willing to support it, there was really nothing we could do. Um, we also implemented a new electronic fare collection system, uh, this past August. Uh, we took the fare boxes out of our buses, and now you can pay with a, um, with your smartphone. You can pay with a pass that you scan. And within a few months, we should be able to allow you to pay with a credit card, just tapping it like you would at a convenience store to get gas. Um, and we balanced our budget in fiscal year twenty-five. Um, and even though our budget for fiscal year twenty-six, which is right now, isn't quite balanced, we budgeted for our optimal number of bus operators, which we're afraid we're not going to hit. So at the end of the year, we're expecting an actual surplus because we won't be able to, um, expend those money unless we hire those drivers. So essentially, we have a balanced budget this year as well. Uh, next slide. And we really worked to strengthen CADA's, uh, the organization and our relationship with the community. We negotiated a new labor contract with our union, um, and they overwhelmingly passed that. Um, as we joked, I was just joking with the union president this afternoon. Both of us didn't like the contract, so that means it's a good contract. Neither side got everything that they wanted. Uh, we have a new CEO who's joined CADA. You'll meet him in a moment. And many members of the executive team. We also made some changes there. Some internal systems to help us process our payroll and our human resources systems more efficiently and effectively. Uh, we enhanced our employee healthcare benefits. We actually went out to the market and got, uh, a better healthcare plan at a lower price than we've been getting, um, in the past. And, uh, we're really enhancing our training and our employee development programs. It's so hard to recruit people and retain people. We're realizing we're going to have to build people from within. That's kind of the future of organizations like ours. Um, and we've been trying to get staff to, to really get involved in decision-making and to recognize that we developed a, a program called the Catalyst Award, which is giving a recognition to employees who have come up with a great idea that's really improved and transformed the organization, to give them some recognition and to promote other employees, you know, helping us to improve the system. Major improvements to our cybersecurity readiness. In fact, we now have a redundant, uh, system running in Lancaster in their emergency operations center in downtown Lancaster. Should anything happen to our computer systems here in State College, we have that system that's running as a live backup. Um, and we've really worked hard to expand our relationship with you folks. Um, reaching out to the member municipalities, talking with you about the services that you need and that you want. Um, many of our expansions here and planned have been because of that dialogue, and we really appreciate that. Next slide. Um, so CADA today, um, we still are the most efficient transit system in Pennsylvania. Uh, our fare box recovery, which is the proportion of our costs that we recover from passenger fares, is almost forty percent. The next closest system in Pennsylvania to us is SEPTA in Philadelphia, and their recovery is fifteen percent. So we're, we're doing pretty well at covering our costs with our fares. Um, our ridership this year is the highest since before two thousand and twenty. Um, and we are about to hit a milestone where we're going to be able to cover most, if not all, the Center Region with either fixed route service or microtransit. So just about every resident is going to have some access to CADA. Uh, we remain, as a community, in the top ten in the United States for the percentage of the population that uses transit to get to work, which really shows that the, the system is giving the community what it, what it needs. Uh, we're environmentally friendly. We just switched to renewable natural gas. We have compressed natural gas now, and now we're sourcing it as renewable gas. Uh, so we're a little bit greener than we were before. And our passenger satisfaction remains very high. We have, uh, higher than ninety percent passenger satisfaction, and that's according to a Pendot poll, not us polling ourselves. So that's somebody else looking at our customers. Um, so what I'd like to do now is introduce you to Todd Horstley. He's our new CEO, and he's going to talk to you about his background and where he's going to take CADA in the future. And I just want to thank you all very much for your support over the last couple of years.
All right. Well, thanks, David, and, um, good afternoon or good evening. Um, as David said, I'm Todd Horstley, and I'm the, um, incoming, and I guess after this meeting, I'll be the, no longer the incoming CEO of, of CADA. But, um, just by way of introduction, I don't, I won't recite my resume line for line, but this just kind of gives you a flavor of the experience that I've had. Um, about twenty-five years, always hard to see that number, um, when I see it on the screen. Um, but about twenty-five years of, um, experience in public transportation. Really started out ground level at a couple of organizations in North Carolina and, and Georgia. Um, these were very new organizations when I joined them, so I really helped to, um, create some of the, the, you know, initial processes that they, they still use today. So, um, I started as the Contracts and Grants Administrator at Go Triangle in Raleigh-Durham. Um, so really, that was back in the days where you didn't really do a lot online. You're just given some manuals, and you're just like, read these and try to figure out how to manage our federal grants and our federal contracts and procurement. So I, um, there I managed, um, all of their state and federal grants, all of their procurement and contracting. At some point, I was the risk manager, I was the HR manager. I was the, um, uh, facilities manager at, at Go Triangle. So really learned the business of, um, of transit at Go Triangle, um, which was at that time called, um, Triangle Transit Authority. Um, it's a small regional bus system in Raleigh-Durham. If you're familiar with that area, there's, it's kind of spread out. If you want to go between one of the major cities in the, in the triangle, you'll, you'll take, uh, if you want to go by transit, you would take Go Triangle. Georgia Regional Transportation Authority, they operate the express bus system in Atlanta. That's the commuter bus system that basically brings people in in the morning, takes them back out in the evenings. Um, I did very much the same work there, really focused on, um, contracts and procurement and federal compliance work. And then, um, then I switched over into more pure operations or into heavier operations and management and executive role at Roy and Fort Transportation Authority out in the Aspen area of Colorado. Um, I was the chief operating officer there, um, for about four years. And, um, during that time, um, I was really functioning as the deputy CEO. All of the department heads, um, reported up through me to our CEO. Um, one of the things that we did there, um, is we constructed and got under operation a, the first rural bus rapid transit system in the nation. It's called the Velocirata. That was, um, something they recruited me for because I had this, uh, federal experience from, um, Go Triangle and Georgia Regional Transportation Authority. So we were able to, um, construct that system and get it up and running while I was at Rafa. And so that's always been kind of a highlight of my career. Um, had planned to be at Rafa for the rest of my career and be the CEO, but, um, I'm originally from Alabama, if you hear an accent. Um, um, and all of my family still lives there, and I am an only child, and my dad got sick. And so I needed to be kind of closer, um, to the East Coast. So, um, I was, started to look for a job. I ended up at the Virginia Department of Railroad Public Transportation, um, in Virginia. Um, I'd planned to be there for about a year or two until I could figure out, you know, what I wanted to do after that. Um, ended up staying there for about ten years. That was a state job in Virginia. I was their, their director of Northern Virginia Transit Program, so I was in the Washington DC area. About seventy-five or eighty percent of the state funding for transit actually goes into Northern Virginia to the metro system in Washington DC, the commuter rail system and the bus systems there. So I was the, I was the director of the Northern Virginia office. Like I said, ended up staying ten years. Fascinating place to work in transit, one of the most transit vibrant, rich, um, areas in the, in the country. But I had been in operations. I really wanted to get back to in operations, and I realized that after, if I don't do it after, you know, after ten years, when I hit my ten-year anniversary, I was like, if I, if I don't do it now, I'll never do it. So luckily, I, I enjoyed working at DRPT. I was able to be very selective in the opportunities that I was looking at at transit agencies, and CADA was one of the ones I looked at. And the rest is history, as they say. So hit the next slide, and got two slides I'll show you. Um, so this is just a slide, um, that kind of talks about initiatives that are ongoing that I'm going to inherit and try to, um, fulfill and, um, kind of work on for the rest of this fiscal year. Um, we are going to be embarking on a new CADA strategic plan, um, starting in around January. Um, the last time CADA did a strategic plan was two thousand and sixteen, I believe. So it's been about ten years. It's time to do a new strategic plan. And I think it was good that they waited for a new, for leadership transition to do that. But, um, it won't be totally new because David is actually still under contract with CADA, and he's going to go back into his consulting role, and he's going to actually help us with the, with the new CADA strategic plan in early two thousand and twenty-six. David mentioned operator recruitment and retention. This is, this is a challenge for transit agencies across the nation. It's not, you know, unique to CADA. But, um, we seem to have just enough operators to get our service on the street every day with just a few extras, so we can absorb one or two, maybe three people calling in sick. But if we get more than that, then we have to really start being creative about trying to get our service out the door. And, you know, in some instances, we may end up having to reduce some service for the day. So, um, operator recruitment and retention is going to be, uh, you know, a focus for us, um, going forward. Um, trying to, um, enhance our numbers of operators. Um, that's really a, an impediment to any kind of, um, service increase that we want to do in the future as well, is, um, the number of operators that we have. Uh, bus stop accessibility study. Um, we have completed a study where we basically did an inventory of all of our bus stops throughout the region. Um, just did a baseline, um, condition assessment of those. Uh, we're going to enter a phase two study where we start prioritizing some of those for future improvements, make sure they're, they're accessible and, um, and, um... improvements, make sure they're, they're accessible and, and basically fit for, fit for CADA service and bringing them up and making some improvements there. And so that study should be complete probably this spring and then we'll start prioritizing some funding for the, for the improvements in our next fiscal year. So there's two facility improvements that are going to happen at CADA in the rest of this fiscal year. I just, neither one of these are major, but I bring them up because they're actually going to happen at our maintenance facility. They're going to be happening right where we all work. So there's going to be a little bit of disruption to our work, but we have a parking garage that's nearly 10 years old now and it's just starting some deterioration, so we're going to do some maintenance on it. And then we have an office built out. This is not, this is not an expansion of our office facility. If you've ever been on our third floor, there's a door. If you open the door, there's this huge room and there's, it's just never been built out in offices. We're just going to build out the rest of the offices there and that'll, like I said, both of these just kind of occur in the space that we're working in. So that's why I bring these up on this slide. Those will be priorities to get done in this fiscal year. And so a couple of potential new services we're looking to start this year that the board has put into our budget or has approved for us to explore. And one is some service to the regional, State College Regional Airport. And then the other is to potentially some service to our regional Amtrak stations. This would be on-demand service. This is not fixed route service. We're not planning to run fixed route buses at this time, but we think there's probably some demand for an on-demand type service to both of these. So especially to the airport, I think that's going to be the one we will prioritize. We'll take a look and see what the actual demand might be for Amtrak service. You know, there's, there are stations in Tyrone, there are stations in Lewistown. It really, we'll take, we'll take a look and try to figure out if there's demand hitting at those Amtrak stations. And then CADA Next, this is an initiative that our board came up with or, and really exciting. I think at one time, and I still think it is, but I think CADA is a innovative organization, but I think we may have lost our mojo since, since COVID. And so we want to kind of get back to being known as an innovative agency. And so the board came up with this concept that we create a team of CADA staff from our rank and file to kind of get together to brainstorm and to come up with innovative ideas and, and things that, you know, CADA can try to, to, to really become that innovate, to rekindle that spirit of innovation that has, that CADA has had in the past. So that's a program that we've, we formed our team. We have seven of our employees, our best and brightest. We actually are going to meet on Wednesday and get that initiative kicked off. And so hopefully they'll come up with some great new ideas that we can talk to you about in the future. So, next slide. And then the future focus. So these are just six themes that, you know, kind of came to mind when people ask me, you know, what do I want to see CADA be in the future? You know, we've, as David said, we've, we've spent a lot of effort over the last couple of years, kind of, you know, reforming our services, rightsizing our services. And so, you know, there's probably not a lot of new services that are going to go on the street because of the operator issue that we've, we've talked about before. So we're really going to be trying to optimize our current services over the next few years. But then if you ask me where I want CADA to be or what I, what I kind of want CADA to be known for, these are six things that came to mind. None of these are really revolutionary. I thought they were when I wrote them down, but then when I see them on the screen, I'm like, no, every organization should really aspire to be these, these six things. But, you know, a safety-first culture, every transit agency in America should say safety is their top priority. At CADA, safety is our top priority, but we say it so much, I think sometimes we get complacent with it and so we don't want to be, we don't want to be complacent. So we're going to, you know, we really want this to be a core value that kind of permeates the entire organization. Excellent customer service, and I always forget to say this, but I really think CADA already does all six of these things very well. So we're just going to kind of try to optimize our, our organization to, to really hone in on these six things. But I believe we already provide an excellent customer experience. We get high marks on our customer service and so we want to continue to optimize on that. We basically want to be, you know, responsive to our customers' concerns, to their complaints, to their, to their compliments. We want it, we want our customers to have an enjoyable ride, to have clean buses, that the buses get them where they want to go, when they want to be there. You know, CADA is an employer of choice in the region. We'd really like for people from the outside to think of CADA as a great place to work, not only because we pay our employees well and we, we provide them with extra benefit or with, with great benefits, but they're just happy employees and that they're happy to, to go to work every day at CADA. So we want to have the happiest employees in the valley. And what I kind of additionally mean by that, not only with salary and benefits, but we were seen as a organization that really supports our, our employees, both their mental health and their just, their, their, their wellbeing. You know, driving a bus, being a customer service attendant or a customer service, you know, someone who interacts with, with the public and maintaining buses, these are all pretty stressful jobs, but CADA, the organization, doesn't have to contribute to that stress. We want to be someone who supports the, the wellbeing of our employees. Being a trusted community partner, we have five member municipalities. We want to be a trusted partner to you guys. We also want to be a trusted partner to Penn State and to, and to Center County. Where I'm kind of going with this is there's an old saying that says, you shouldn't do pro, you should do projects with the community, not to the community. So I want a CADA to be, to be an organization that we do transit with the community and not to the community. So we want to be a trusted community partner. An organization that works, where I'm kind of going with this is sometimes I feel like things just don't work like they used to. And so I want CADA to be an organization that works, that you don't really think about. You know, I want CADA to be well thought of, but I really don't want you to have to think about it during the day. It's just a, it's just another part of your day. It works, gets you where you need to go. It's not a pain point in your day. And so it just, it continues just to be an organization that works. And then back to this innovative spirit, I talked a little bit about it with our CADA Next initiative. We just want to, again, be a, be an organization that is known for innovation. We want to be willing to, you know, to try new things and empower our employees to, you know, to contribute ideas to solve problems. And so CADA Next will go a long way to that, but, you know, we want it to be a, an innovative spirit throughout the organization. So those are kind of the things that I'm going to focus on in the future along with, we're not going to lose sight of the things that David talked about in his, his presentation, but these, these six plus the three that he talked about will be our, our, our future focus. So happy to answer questions if I can. I will hopefully see a lot of you. I'm going to be here Friday night at your town dinner, so might be able to have a better conversation with you there.
You said about expanding to the, the Amtrak places. You might be a little bit more surprised at how many people from State College go down there and catch a train in Lewistown. I'm sure they also go to Tyrone.
Yeah.
And, and with them expanding that route to two, two runs a day, I think that's going to build down there more, more than you think.
Okay.
Especially when people can't get through the airport easily anymore.
Yeah, we believe there is a demand. I just don't know what it is yet. And so we want to explore that. Before we commit to two-month service, we want to make sure we explore it.
It wouldn't be as hard as you think because the trains run on a pretty decent schedule.
Right.
You know, they have one, they'll have two morning, two afternoon here coming up. So it wouldn't be that difficult to do a route around that.
Another thing, we're also just with the Amtrak station, I think both the stations in Lewistown and Tyrone are basically platforms without any kind of improvements.
Oh, there's a, there's a station in Lewistown, they do have a place or they have a concession and restrooms and whatnot, so there are.
No, that, that's, yeah, that's good to know. I know, I'm more familiar with Tyrone. It is just basically a platform. So we've also thought about maybe Altoona is a better, and better option than Tyrone, so.
Depends on which direction you go.
Yeah. If you're going east, Lewistown. If you're going west, probably Altoona.
What's the difference between CADA Go and CADA Ride?
CADA Go is our on-demand microtransit service that anybody can basically ride and call up and, and reserve a ride. It operates in just certain zones. CADA Ride is our paratransit service. So that, that's for people with disabilities or otherwise who need special accommodation. And it's a federally required program that has to kind of mirror our fixed route service.
Those are both on-call systems, I think.
They're, they're both on-call, yes. Well, I appreciate you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Nope.
Thank you.
Dorothy Blair has her hand up. She would like to speak, I believe.
Dorothy, you'll need to unmute.
I, thank you for the really good presentation on CADA. And one thing I was confused about in the first presentation, what is what renewable natural gas is, but I'll, I'll let that one go. What I'm interested in, I think that's a very good idea that was, was talked about, going, having a bus go to each of the train station. That's fantastic. I highly second that and that motion. And the other thing is, I think that, that we need to have more electric buses that can use nat, solar power. And I think that would be really important. I don't know why we wouldn't do that in the first place because solar is very important to everybody here in the room and also to the, our area. People want that. So I think there should be a movement in that, in that way to get us electric buses. And I think, I don't know whether that offer from the state was still there to help people get buses like that. Is there a, you know about that? Any of you know about that? Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can. Sorry, I had to get up to the microphone.
Does anybody know in Harris whether or not the grants to get electric buses is still a thing that the state is offering?
I can tell you that there isn't a specific grant program for electric buses, transit buses in the state. That is a technology we have been watching very closely. It's in, I guess I would say it's in kind of a trough right now. There are a couple of major electric bus manufacturers that have gone bankrupt. So it's very difficult to get electric buses right now and California has a requirement that all buses have to be zero emission within a couple of years. So all the electric buses that are available are being purchased by the systems in California. We're watching that technology. We're also watching hydrogen technology. Both of those are kind of the zero emission technologies that are kind of racing for which one is going to be first. We're already pretty green with renewable natural gas, so.
Sorry, go ahead, go ahead. I'm just, don't know what renewable natural gas is. Could you maybe tell me that?
I can. So natural gas, compressed natural gas is gas that just comes out of the ground that you use for your, you know, your stove, your oven, your furnace. Renewable natural gases, natural gas that was made in a couple of different ways, but it's basically man-made. It's often from agricultural waste. It can be from landfills. It can be from various sources. So essentially, it's gas that would vent into the atmosphere and instead of that is captured and then used as a fuel.
Such as farms that are using the, the power.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah, right. Well, not the burps, but the other end.
So thank you.
Sure.
Well, highly, I'd be very happy to see you produce, pursue that.
Sure. So we are monitoring that technology. It's an interesting time right now for electric buses. One of the challenges too with that technology, with CADA in particular, even though we're a little system, we have a very robust service day. Our buses go out at six in the morning and they come in at midnight. And there are no buses that could do that in a day. We would probably need two or even three electric buses for each CNG bus we have now. And we just don't have the money to be able to afford that. So I think that technology is still evolving, but we're very interested in watching it.
And I just want to say, I recently wrote, I hadn't written the buses for a long time and it was fantastic how, how well the service worked. So I want to congratulate you on that.
Thank you very much. And thank you for writing.
I have a question now. As you mentioned that, as you monitor the technology coming in, is there any concern about the footprint we leave when we use electric, electric bus? Between the minerals being mined and what needs to be done and then the lithium batteries that are being thrown into the earth and they're not, you know, the waste that we have of that? You know, I, I, I'm this green, I want to be as green as I can get, but I, I don't want to be green if I can't, you know, if I have a lithium battery that I have to put in the earth like that. So do you watch that as well?
We do. You know, we're looking at, you know, what is the overall economic impact of, of the whole option from the construction of the equipment to the fuel itself, to the disposal? That's why, if I were a betting man, I think I'd put my money on hydrogen.
I think so too.
I think that's more likely going to evolve because the duty cycle for hydrogen vehicles is longer. They're more of a hybrid vehicle, but that technology is really quite new. So there are more systems that are trying it out and it's looking much more promising, whereas it seems like the electric buses, they've kind of plateaued. Unless there's a huge technological change with batteries, it's just going to be very difficult to get a bus that runs all day without having to bring it in and then spend an hour or two to charge it. We also did a study several years ago, a very cursory study, but if we went electric, you know, how would that work? And one of the big problems we have is we'd probably have to build a substation with West Penn Power to get more electricity to charge all of our buses. So it's a, as you said, it's a very complicated question and there's a lot of moving parts.
One quick thing, in California, with them wanting zero emissions, Toyota now offers a fuel cell car.
Yes.
Anybody else have any thoughts or comments? Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Next item on our agenda is the recognition of Thomas Miller, former township manager.
Thomas Miller, who served as the Harris Township Manager for 15 years and retired in 2003, passed away on October 15th, 2025. Part of becoming the Township Manager, Mr. Miller served as the Township's zoning officer. During his tenure as manager, the Township experienced a significant amount of new development. The board expanded in size from three to five members. The Township began annual brush and leaf collection in the Township. The Harris Township Water Authority was purchased by the State College Borough Water Authority. And the board wishes to recognize Mr. Miller's contributions to Harris Township and express their condolences to his family, friends and colleagues.
I think we all agree with that. Any comments?
I have one other comment. He was instrumental also in, in improving our roads. He very aggressively went after road improvements early on. We actually took a bond out to do that, but in the long run, it would save money because the poorer roads are harder to, more expensive to fix up. And so he was very, very savvy about doing that.
Okay, moving on. Proposed ordinance number 379 repealing the corridor overlay district standards and establishing comprehensive landscaping requirements.
So a public hearing was held on this item earlier this evening. So unless, if you'd like, we can certainly read the agenda language again, but if not, we'd be happy to take any comments or questions, may I?
Any further, any comments on that from the public, from the board?
I want to make, is this the one we've, we've been working on to reduce, so we don't have to put 300 trees on a lot? Is that what?
Yes, this, this, the comprehensive landscaping standards will not require the same number of trees that were essentially a reforestation requirement in our buffer yards. So this is more reasonable and will help ensure plant survivability.
Listen to a post.
Second.
Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Proposed ordinance 380, amendments to the property maintenance and fire code.
Similarly, a public hearing was held on this item earlier in the evening. And happy to answer any questions or comments the board may have.
This is basically a safety improvement.
It would require any, any property that meets that definition of residential rental to have a health and safety, yeah, code inspection from the code office. Correct.
I'll move to approve ordinance number 380, amending the property maintenance and fire code.
Mr. Chair? Did you check for public comment before?
Oh, sure.
Just to make sure.
Anybody want to weigh in on this? Do I have a motion? Discussion from the board? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed note. Motion passes. Okay, now we're switching it up and we're going to ordinance 38. God, you got me all confused.
It's 382.
382. All right, there it is. I found it in the packet. All right. Ordinance 32, establishing regulations and procedures and standards for the review and approval of short-term rentals.
Yeah, for anyone in the public who may be confused by this, the chair did announce that items E and F were going to be switched in terms of order for tonight's meeting. So this is the ordinance that you have been working on for several months that is essentially requiring a licensing program in establishing regulations and procedures for short-term rentals. After the agenda was published, staff had several conversations with our special counsel on, related to the ordinance. And they're recommending that some changes be made, or at least considered, to section 3-3.10, exemptions to short-term rental requirements. Subsection A. This is the section that specifically addresses existing properties that are not owner occupied and how they are allowed to be exempt from the owner occupancy requirement. This section includes a list of circumstances in which the exemption would cease. And that includes ownership of the property being transferred, the property becomes owner occupied, the property is no longer utilized as a short-term rental, or the property no longer has a valid short-term rental license. So in discussing this with special counsel, the concern was related to item number one, ownership of the property is transferred. There was concerns about that related to these uses being declared non-conforming as a result of proposed ordinance number 381. So the recommendation would be to consider removing that from this ordinance. If the board's agreeable to that, we would need to re-advertise this for a public hearing. Would plan to do so at your December 8th meeting if you're agreeable to that. If you're not agreeable to that change, we would have to look at probably some other changes to this ordinance and possibly to the zoning ordinance as well. So we would want direction from the board on other changes. You would want to see if that's not something that you're agreeable to. And then I'm not sure when we would be able to bring that back to you, depending on the scope of those changes, if you were to have other things that you'd like considered. So at this point, what we're looking for is feedback from the board on how to proceed. I will note that our special counsel, Mr. Walker, is available on Zoom. Should you have any specific questions from him as well?
Okay, well, let's start off with any comments or thoughts from the public on this. Please.
Mike Travers, what exactly is being taken down? The fact that people can transfer the property into an item is now going to be allowed? Is that what's going on?
Yes.
So it's, is that really what you want? Like you take a look at the hotel across Ramada, every time they transferred it, it went downhill a little bit more. And are we going to have houses that are great now? And people are renting them out? And they're going to pass them on? And each time it'll take a step down if we don't have that transfer in there?
Well, I think that our other ordinances and regulations and zoning requirements will still be in place.
Okay.
And still be enforceable.
Okay, thank you.
Would anybody else like to step up and address this issue? All right, let's go around the table. You're fine?
Yep.
Nigel?
I think under the circumstances, it's a thing to do because there's precedent with, with non-conforming uses being, going with the land and the property and not with the ownership. So it's understandable why that, that is a weak spot.
Tracy?
Um, I have a lot of concerns because my devious little mind just starts going to work. And so here's my question to you all. I have a property in my name, okay? And I decided I'm going to rent this property out and I'm going to do what I darn well please. And I'm going to violate different things. And finally, I'm willing to pay my $1,700 in fines. And then I, after that's all done and I lose my license, I just pass it on to my wife or my husband or my daughter or whoever, you don't know. I mean, whatever, my daughter, my son, my aunt, my uncle, my brother. And then they run it for six months or so and they do whatever they darn well please because they have a permit now for this property. And they just run it as they darn well please, however many days, if they want to have parties or they get this or that or whatever. And they get their three violations and they pay their $1,700 and just transfer it to somebody else. And then they turn around and do what they darn well please and transfer it to somebody else. Oh, and then after a year, they can transfer it back to me anyway. So what have we done? So the only thing that ordinance has actually done is said, you know, we, you can't have any more Airbnbs. So my question is this. I, I don't know, I would like to know the repercussions and what we're going to do if we have problems. I mean, we're looking at now the issue that's going to happen to our neighborhoods, not just next year, not just this year, next year, but 10 years from now. What's going to happen if that, do we have any kind of, are there any repercussions? Do we have any power of changing anything? You know, if something happens? If it's continually abused? And that's been my problem all along, is to give people some power because they don't have it now. And so that's the only, it's all, the power is all in the hands of the owners of, you know, the individual Airbnbs. And that's all I really wanted to give to the residents. And I still see loopholes in there. And what are we going to do if we have to close these loopholes? That's my only question. What are we going to do? And that's what I'd like an answer to. And if it's, we bring this back up immediately? And do we have the ability to stop abuse? Do we have that ability? Who cares about 1,700 when you're getting a ton of money from an Airbnb? That's nothing. That's a pittance. So that's my question. That's the only question I have. And if we say something to the effect that, yes, in the future, we do have power and we can bring this back up if there is abuse, if there is a problem, then I am okay with this. But if we sit here and say, there's nothing we can do, then I'm just not okay with this. So if the board would agree that if there is a problem, we can, we can review this and we can, we can seriously look at changing it, then I'm okay with it. But if we're going to sit here and say, this is it, then I'm not okay with it because we're here to protect the majority of the people in this township, not the minority of people who have the standalone Airbnbs. And that's what I have to say about that.
May I interject here? Perhaps Todd can address it. Firstly, does, because we have something in here that's three violations. And if they're in violation, they lose their permit. If they regain it again, it comes in under the new rules. Is that correct?
Well, it has to be convictions of three violations in a rolling calendar year. So it's only in the case where three convictions occur within a rolling calendar year that a license would be suspended. My understanding of the way that the ordinance is proposed to be changed is the end result will be the same. The license will be revoked for a year, 13 months at the longest. And then the process would start over again with reissuance of a license.
Would the three convictions have to be under one ownership or does it go with the property?
I don't know that the ordinance specifies that.
Good question, huh?
Yeah, I think, I think the way we've always thought of it since we started this conversation is that the convictions would be under one owner. But that is something we can discuss with our solicitor. Since it's, since it's in a rolling calendar year, it's possible that those might run with the property.
Yeah, the way that it's written, it's my understanding that those three convictions would be tied to the license holder. And to answer the question that was posed previously, the board always has the eligibility to review an ordinance and determine whether it is sufficient and whether it's meeting the policy goals of the township. And if it is not, then to revise it accordingly.
Frank, your thoughts?
Sure. Yeah, I have no problem doing this but because I agree with what he just said, that, you know, we make the rules, we can change them. You know, we can come back later and say, hey, this isn't working. And I'm not saying we aren't going to have to do that regardless of what we do. That, you know, six months, a year, a couple of years down the road, we might find one part of this ordinance that, that we need to fix or correct or adjust. So I'm, I have no problem with that because if it does become a big, major issue, we can revisit it.
I mean, to me, this is a move in the right direction. And we do have to, and I'm, you know, being a property rights person myself, I'm against taking away something from somebody just, I mean, there's value in that property. And the ability to rent it out. If you take that away from someone, you are taking value away from them.
So it's a restraint of trade issue then?
Yeah. So we are going to revisit this at a later time.
If the board's agreeable to that change, then yeah, what I can plan to do is have this advertised next month and make that adjustment to the ordinance.
Do you want confirmation or do you want to vote?
I think it'd be just a, just a confirmation you're all okay with. Or the majority of you are okay with is all I'm looking for. It doesn't have to be a vote, so I'm good.
Good.
I think it needs to happen, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim.
Okay, and now we're going back to, come on. 381. Amendments to the zoning ordinance related to short-term rental uses.
So a public hearing was held on this item earlier this evening. I will note that the effective date of this ordinance is December the 8th. Since the board seemed agreeable to making changes to ordinance number 382, and that would be December the 8th, that you would be holding that public hearing, we made the effective date of this ordinance postdated to that date to allow for the ordinances both to potentially affect so long as you adopt ordinance 382 at next month's meeting.
I'm sorry. I thought the SDRs canceled.
Yeah, please do.
I guess I'm just confused. I thought, for some reason, I maybe I didn't hear. My name is Sean Houts. I, I thought at the beginning, the, the short-term rental was deferred till the next meeting or something. I maybe totally misunderstood the process here, the hearing.
The hearing was canceled.
For both, for?
For the short-term rental licensing ordinance.
Okay.
But we did have a public hearing for the zoning amendments where it would permit these as uses in certain zoning districts.
Okay, that's, I was, I was a little bit confused. I guess I did have, I don't know if it would be appropriate, if it would have been appropriate to make comments then or if it would have been appropriate if, if, if the whole, if we can just make comments the next time? Or what's the, if it seems like if, if both ordinances are deferred?
Well, the only ordinance that was specifically deferred was ordinance number 382, which is the ordinance related to licensing. This ordinance is ordinance 381. The board did hold a public hearing, so they can take action on it this evening.
Okay.
This is the ordinance that would add a zoning definition for short-term rental, include some basic use regulations and then also identify the districts where there allows accessory uses. And it wouldn't take effect until December the 8th, which is the next board's regular meeting date.
Okay. I guess, I don't know if, where are my comments? I had some comments, but I don't know exactly where they fall, primarily related to the, the time constraint. If you tell me to take a hike, I can take a, I can take a hike. But I, yeah, I don't know if it's appropriate to make those comments relative to 382 because it seems like there's some overlap, you know, across those ordinances. So I just, if you'd allow me, I would make some comments now. Otherwise, I can.
381 does include the, the number of days restriction in the definition. So it's in there.
You're not alone, James.
Feels, by the way.
All right. It's good to know I've come. Yeah, I guess specifically speaking to the 120 days, I guess thinking about experience that I've had and I know many others have in the area that, that obtain guests or tenants, I guess, that, that start out as like maybe a week or a weekend because somebody's in town, maybe for a variety of reasons, tending to like a sick child at, at the university or tending to a sick relative. But those parlay into like multiple weeks, in some cases, months, I guess. And so that, I guess the unintended consequences, I think, of the 120 days, I guess, one, like you're, I guess, the, I think, as I understand, the purpose of the ordinances is to make housing available in the, in the community. Just restricting it to 120 days by default kind of restricts now the availability of housing for, for those, those rental properties by 245 days a year. And again, limits our ability to serve people like that that maybe have like evolving, evolving conditions that, that need your support. I guess it also kind of restricts, I think Airbnb and VRBO have kind of become like the ubiquitous solution for people to look for interim housing. So like we're, if we're limiting that, it potentially restricts like not just the availability of, the ability for people to search for housing in the area when they need something like on a more temporary basis. I don't know if any of, any of you have done like eBay, but like, you know, eBay buyers and sellers like vigorously like protect their rating, like seller and buyer ratings on eBay. And the same thing kind of happens in Airbnb and VRBO. You know, guests want to be really good guests so they get good ratings and then they're invited again to stay and, and, and hosts and landlords want to be really good landlords and hosts. And so in, in doing that, it kind of protects both, both parties. It protects the, like the tenants that come into the area and it protects the hosts. And I just, I don't know if there's other solutions right now in the marketplace that, that allow somebody to do that. And you can go like visit like a lot of different homes and a lot of different landlords, but you don't really know until you have the experience. And what these platforms allow you to see is what, over time, like how have these landlords performed? And, and so I guess if you feel like by restricting the number of days, you're basically telling the landlords that like, I, I'm going to have to be really super selective about which days that, that I do rent. And then, and so taking those, those things out of supply and then preventing them maybe from making those homes available for people to search. I guess the, the other thing I would say about it, I guess, is just the, the safety concerns that I have. And I, I think that's what will happen. I think a lot of landlords will just stick to the 120 days and then those homes will be vacant. But I guess like from a safety perspective, that's, that seems pretty dangerous to me overall for homes to be vacant 245 days a year from like, and run the risk of like flood, fire, like damage, things that you're not there observing with a tenant in place. Like that.
Well, I'll, I'll start off. One is, of course, more than 120 days, that's a long-term rental, which is permitted now.
More than 30 days. In other words, a short-term rental, if you, if you rent to somebody for over 30 days, you just blew it and you lost your short-term rental license.
Right, that's, that's a complexity. That's, that's a complexity.
Not really that complex. You're just going to say, you know, you can't stay here continuously. They can vacate for a day and then come back for another 29 theoretically.
Right.
But.
That's be, like, so when, you know, I'm, I'm doing this now with, with construction workers that have moved in that like helped build the hospital and, and you're not renting for like, you know, the thousands of dollars that some people are renting for like for a football weekend. That's, that's not the case for like the extended, extended stay type arrangements. So if you're then, you're still like capped, stay type arrangements, so, if you're then, you're still like capped, if you do that to a hundred and twenty days a year, that's not profitable, it's not economically viable then at that point, to even offer that, but I, I know interim housing is definitely a need in this area, so like, there's short-term, and then there's like long-term, like annual leases, but there is this middle ground of interim housing, and I'm just concerned about, I guess, if you take, if, if we restrict to a hundred and twenty days, you restrict the availability of that, I'm, I guess I'm concerned about the quality of the relationship of the landlords and, and tenants will find, and, and the safety of the homes and the communities, because they're not being monitored.
Well, what's this, I have a question, what's to stop you from specializing in interim housing, and doing a long-term license, and basically focusing on a month or more?
I, I guess, I would say, like, I've, I've tried to do that, and then there's, there's times that that really does work, and then all of a sudden it doesn't, and then you're just, you're sitting, and, and so if you then were now restricted, prevented from renting less than twenty-nine days, it's like, you know, it's, it's like a, I guess what I would characterize, I, I, I'm like, probably the majority, like, I'd say seventy percent, like interim housing, and then thirty percent the other way, and that's, like, I kind of have to do that to make it economically viable to work on the property, so it's just, it's hard to do just one or the other, I would say.
Oh, let me address one other comment, and, this is not specific to you, I don't know anything about your properties.
Yep.
But the fact that Airbnb, for example, polls the owners on how satisfied they were with the tenants, and the visitors get polled how satisfied they were with the ownership, but nobody is polling the rest of the neighborhood, and asking how satisfied they are, and that's kind of how we got into this problem.
Yeah, nobody, I do.
You know what I mean?
Because I don't want to, because I don't want to be an issue, I don't want to be a nuisance, and I have zero tolerance clause.
I understand, I'm not pointing a finger.
But, you know, I could see how, like, you know, it could be a problem.
But that's, and that's our primary concern.
Yeah.
Is the quality and character of our neighborhoods, of our community.
Yeah, and I think I made the comment, and I'm probably well over my minutes, but I made the comment, I think, last time, that, like, the reason that I kind of, I got into these types of rentals, was because the quality of the long-term sense that I was, that I was having, I had probably four or five, I mean, I, I had a tenant, like, threatened, threatened me with physical violence, I didn't saw like a high, like a security system and cameras, and like, was bringing his biker gang over to assault me, I had somebody that, you know, assaulted one of my kids, I had a father that was letting his kid run around broken glass, and I, you know, the tenant didn't tell me that there was anything broken, and, and there's, I have tenants that won't move out, I have tenants that moved out too early, and, and the pipes froze in the house, and like, I can assure you that those tenants were not adding to the community, like, there was, that was actually the exact reason that I got out of it, and I would say, like, the, the people that I've had the, like, the opportunities to meet through this process were like, very friendly in the community, and I know, I'm sure that there's like, a few rotten eggs, and some, some bad, probably guests that used the, an Airbnb or a short-term rental for something that it wasn't intended, parties or whatever, and, but I, I don't think that that's the majority, at least like, not in my experience, not how I screen people, and I, you know, if I, I personally, I know others do, if, if anything looks off, you know, you don't, you just pass on them, but, anyway, again, the hundred and twenty days is challenging, I mean, given, like, owner occupied can, can do the hundred and twenty days, and the home is lived in the rest of the year, it seems like the, the un-owner occupied, non-conforming, seems like, like, the home should be occupied the other, sorry, the other two hundred and forty-five days per year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to step up and?
Good evening, my name is Liam Goble, I, I also echo the hundred and twenty-day constraint, I know other townships had offered, and have gone with kind of a blended model, you guys have chosen not to for some reason, where you're allowed the, you can go for this interim housing, and also allow for some short-term housing, which makes it more workable, you have the person in charge in the ordinance, which all townships around here do, and I serve as person in charge for about fifty different short-term rentals across the entire region, we represent about somewhere between twelve and fifteen thousand people that come through, I, I interact with twelve, fifteen thousand people a year that come to the area, and they ask me, you know, where to go eat, where to have breakfast, we rec, we have recommended Duffy's, we recommend the Bike Roost, there's a lot of people that go out to Rothrock and, and bike, and ask where to go get their bikes worked on, it's, we've, we've recommended that, and, and pushed Bolzberg, and, and all that Bolzberg has to offer everybody, and so that, that's something that I'm hearing you say that you don't really want in the community, the tourist dollars coming this direction, and it's a concern of mine, you know, Bolzberg, everybody around here knows Bolzberg and enjoys Bolzberg, tourists from out of the area don't, I get a lot of confusion, people think Bolzberg and Belfond are the same, and I have to inform them that they're not, that Bolzberg is five minutes down the road from State College, so we get a lot of that, and there's a lot of clarification that I have to do for people, I realize twelve to fifteen thousand people is not a lot annually, with the total number of visitors that come to the area, it's ten percent of the stadium for one football game, so it, it's not much, but it's something, and it's, it's personal recommendations, it's not the, the guy at the front of the eighteen-year-old at the hotel that's saying, hey, yeah, go try autos or whatever, it's, it's somebody that lives here in town, and says, Duffy's has a really cool bar, you should go check it out, and enjoy the pub atmosphere there, and, and so I, but I'm hearing you guys say you don't want that here, I do hear what you're saying, Bruce, with the community, and I've talked with my neighbors, the one neighbor said he didn't know anybody was in the house unless he saw cars in the driveway, the other neighbors are long-term tenants, and they sit out back drinking and smoking marijuana or something, because they act weird in the backyard, there's not much I can do about that, but that's, those are some of the neighbors that I have, and those are the kinds of homes that I, that I operate, I know there are some bad apples here in town, and I don't have problems with a lot of what you guys are bringing in for existing owners, when I first started this, I talked with the secretary here in this building, and I said, this is what I want to do, short-term rentals, I, I buy and rehab old homes that are uninhabitable, and make them habitable, I told the secretary that, I said, I want to rent it for short-term purposes, football games, less than thirty days, she said, we don't care here, do whatever you want, less than thirty, it doesn't matter, as soon as you hit thirty, you need that rental permit, but anything under thirty, we don't care, it doesn't matter to us, and so that's why I decided to purchase two homes here, fix them up, and rent them out that way, I do feel like I'm getting the old rug pulled out from under me with some of these rules that you are, are bringing in, and it's frustrating, it's very frustrating that my rights are being taken away with no compensation on, from, from you guys in any way, shape, or form, so, that's, those are my comments, I apologize if it's not the 381, 382, I was a little confused on that.
It's okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Please.
Jack Euler, I'm a resident of College Heights in State College Borough, while I'm not a Harris Township resident, I support the short-term rental ordinance, the conversion of residential properties into non-owner occupied Airbnbs, for short-sighted economic gain is creating a systemic problem across our county, displacing long-term renters, harming housing affordability and quality of life, and eroding community, just like Harris Township communities, our borough neighborhood has experienced this firsthand, with many single-family homes being dedicated to hotels, next door to us, the family living in the home didn't have the release, their lease renewed, they were forced out, and the property became an Airbnb, we endured constant disruptive activity, including parties, public urination, vomiting, drug use, trash, over occupancy, overgrown vegetation, and illegal parking, even when there weren't nuisance issues, the rhythm of daily life disappeared for us and our other neighbors, what was once a typical neighboring family home, was turned into a never-ending cycle of faceless, extractive transactions, transient guests, check-ins after four PM, check-ins before eleven AM, online reviews, and cleaners performing the frequent house turnover, our borough's short-term rental ordinance was crucial in stopping this, and empowering our community, through collective community effort with the borough, our neighborhood was able to cease the short-term rental activity at several of the Airbnb properties, which basic nuisance and zoning ordinances were not able to do, a Harris Township ordinance is necessary to empower its resident similarity, the manager of the problematic property next to us operates over fifty short-term rentals in the area, with several in Harris Township, residents shouldn't have to compromise their quality of life for non-owner occupied short-term rentals like these, enforcement will be challenging, and the ordinance will not be perfect, but it's really important to pass it, in our experience, the short-term rental property manager tried to exploit any and all loopholes, often treating the borough ordinance like it was a plumbing problem to solve, rather than a regulation, while the property next door to us is now a thirty-plus-day rental, it has been turned into a long-term rental, it's still advertised on Airbnb, managed like a short-term rental, and is unaffordable for locals, depending on the time of year and occupancy, prices range from six thousand dollars to more than thirteen thousand dollars a month, we have some normalcy now, but violations persist, and it's still removed for local housing stock, I support the ordinances a hundred-day limit, which is generous and shouldn't be increased, in the borough's case, we also have a hundred and twenty-day limit, the original proposal was actually sixty days, a hundred days was a compromise which was very agreeable to rental operators, I personally do not support the grandfathering of non-owner occupied rentals, I know there's a lot of considerations there, but it allows existing problematic properties to continue operating as hotels, leaving residents with limited recourse, if the property next to us was in this situation, our neighborhood would likely not have been able to achieve a positive outcome, in the end, thank you for enabling Harris Township residents to protect their neighborhoods, maintain community, and prevent, prevent long-term renter displacement, thanks.
Thanks for your comments.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Goble, I live in Springfield Commons, just up the hill in Harris Township, I guess I'm really puzzled why someone who lives in the borough is even commenting on this, they have their own ordinances, and I don't understand what your interest in this is at all, I'm sorry you had a bad experience, but you've got really strict ordinances now, so it should be taken care of, the hundred and twenty days is a problem for us as well, one of the things in the very beginning was that it seemed to me that we were talking about, people were concerned that some of the Airbnbs were empty a lot, and they didn't like that, it was a bad look for the neighborhood, the hundred and twenty days is going to ensure, as Sean said, that houses are empty two-thirds of the year, and that's, seems to be a contradiction of what your original proposal was, to try to get homes to not be empty, I did want to say, and I'm not, I'm really puzzled as to why there's some strictness here about switching from short-term rental to a longer term, other municipalities around here are not so strict, and I just wanted to share a really great experience, we've had several, but when we first started Airbnb seven years ago, we also talked to the secretary here, we lived in Hershey, we had a local manager, but we wanted to make sure before we bought a property up here, that it would be able to be rented, and they said, yeah, it's great, we love short-term rentals, we can see it going forever, so we did, we bought it, and now are faced with this, but one of the people who rented from us was the wife of a Harrisburg attorney, and her daughter, her daughter had, was a senior, she was a bioengineer at Penn State, and her housing situation was so stressful that she had decided not to finish, she was a senior, and she said to her mom, I'm move-in day, I can't do this, I'm going back home, and her mom contacted us, and asked if they could rent our house for the weekdays, they knew that we wanted, you know, the sporting events, to be able to rent to weekenders, so, we said yes, and they would move in for the week, they would vacate for the weekend, the place was cleaned, we would have weekend people, and then they would come back, and they credit their daughter being able to graduate with honors, with the fact that they were able to do this in our home, so it was a real blessing to us, also to them, and we've had others, we had a handicapped woman this year who was looking for housing, she stayed for a month, a little bit more than a month, actually, because we have a one-level home, and she could get around, and then she bought housing here, so, it's a great intro for people, but sometimes you need to have the flexibility that somebody can stay longer, and it has worked in other municipalities, to be able to go across, we also had one Airbnb in College Township, we had a permit through the COG, and we had a permit through them, because you can do both, so, anyway, thanks for all, for everything, we've gotten to know all of your personalities, and it's been a good thing, thank you for your work, and thanks for considering all aspects.
Is there anybody else who would like to step up to the mic?
I'm not much of a public speaker, but my name is George Rodriguez, I'm also in construction and flooring, owner of Jane Emery Modeling and Complete Floor Cover in Lamont, well, originally, I was not, you know, looking at this as an Airbnb, whenever I got the house, it was in the seventies, it was completely, you know, somebody lived there, for, a lady lived there, and fortunately, she passed away, and I pretty much went ahead and gutted the whole place, in order for my mom to stay there, unfortunately, my mom's in assisted living, and she was not able to stay there, I also has, have rental apartments in Ferguson Township and Lamont, and honestly, I didn't really feel comfortable, like, renting it, renting it year-round, because even though I have a realty company that manages, I just put a lot of time and effort into it, like, a lot of love, I mean, I got it everything, everything inside is handicap accessible, new kitchen, new this, new that, so I kind of turned to Airbnb, because I have the control, right, like, I can go in there and inspect, I have like cameras, I can see, like, I can read the reviews, I, I feel comfortable whenever the tenant, the customer, the guest, not the tenant, comes in, I feel comfortable, you know, I reach out to them, do they need anything, I do eye-to-eye contact, I mean, honestly, you have to get involved to be in Airbnb, originally, I had no intention to Airbnb, but I, I enjoy it, I get to meet people, like, I introduce myself, anything they need, Mr. Houts, I recommend, like, the climbing place, Duffy's Tavern, Bull Avenue, and those are very unique places, they, I actually have them in my review, you have to go there, Earlystown Diner, best breakfast, Bull Avenue, the, the breakfast place, they love it, because they can walk down there, so, long story short, I was in intent to be in Airbnb, and I've been doing it for five years, and honestly, it's, it's been great, I mean, I have no complaints, I got to meet my neighbors, everybody's on the watch out for me, like, you know, they just say, hey, you know, but in regards to guests, they've been awesome, and I also have a long-term coming in, because being in the construction field, I get to know a lot of realtors in this area, a lot of people in State College, you know, I go into somebody's home to remodeling, long story short, somebody called me, they needed a place for two and a half weeks, they're coming from Canada, professor from the university, somebody that, from RE/MAX called and said, hey, we're in a bind, they're just closing their house in Canada, they have no place to stay, and they're, they want somebody that they can trust, so they, they're moving in for two weeks, for them to, their person... So they're moving in for two weeks for them to, they're purchasing a home here. And anyways, long story short, sorry to make it long, but just like I said, originally, I had no intent to do this, and I got involved with it, and I just think it's a great place for a community like this to have.
Appreciate your comments.
No problem.
Is there anybody else who wants to step up? Okay. Has someone made the motion? Please.
I move that we pass ordinance 381, Chapter 12 zoning, to define and permit short-term rentals as an accessory use in specific zoning districts.
Second.
Discussion of the board.
Just a comment.
Please.
You know, several, I've heard several times tonight that people came to our secretary a few years back when they wanted to buy their house, and, "Yeah, we have short-term..." "Yeah, we did." And then how we got to here was all the problems, because we also have 6,000 residents that we answer to that have complained of this issue, so we've had to put ordinances in. And I apologized to everybody, but we have to do something. So, that's just a comment I have.
Further comments from the board? Motion in the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no?
No.
Okay, motion carries. And we moved item G.
H.
So we're on to H. Keystone Water Resources Center requests for funding.
All right. Township received a request for funding from the Keystone Water Resources Center, also known as KWRC, which is an independent nonprofit that studies stream flow, temperature, and the water quality of five stations in Harris Township, which includes Galworth Gap, Blue Spring, Lower Cedar Run, Upper Spring Creek, and Linden Hall Spring. The request was received after the board's last budget work session in October. KWRC is requesting an annual contribution of $1,500 to $2,000 in 2026. You will note their letter requested $1,500, but they also asked if you'd be willing to give $2,000 as well. A copy of their request was included with the agenda. If the board is interested in providing funding to KWRC, staff should be directed to amend the draft 2026 budget to include funding to this organization in the amount specified by the Board of Supervisors.
Comments from the public?
All right. I would make a motion to amend the request and have it at $1,000 rather than $1,500.
I did read that.
Oh, okay.
It didn't like give me...
Sorry, I didn't hear. Was there a question?
Do we typically give two?
Can we get a second before you do that?
Oh, second.
Was that a second in my $1,000?
No, wait, no, wait.
There was a motion you made. Okay.
We made a motion for $1,000.
I don't want a second to that motion.
Okay.
I let it go, then.
Can I ask a question to discuss this before? I'm not favorable to this, and I don't know if we need $1,500 or $2,000, I think, or whatever. But my question is, instead of amending our whole budget, you know, why don't we just, if we're interested in donating to this or giving these guys contributions, just authorize Mark to do it, get it out of the special fund or wherever he can do that, instead of trying to redo our whole budget, because we have the budget done. Is that something we can do, instead of trying to redo?
You can, in this particular case. Telling us just to change the number of the budget isn't going to make a big difference for us to publish it tomorrow that way. So what we'll do after your next agenda item, assuming you tentatively adopt the budget, we're going to have to go ahead and finalize that document and put it on our website and put a copy in the office, advertise it in the newspaper. So we just looked at it as an opportunity to go ahead and incorporate it, just to include it in there for funding purposes. It doesn't matter, though, if you don't want to amend the budget, that's fine.
I just have some questions about it, if I may.
Please.
Like, I mean, I don't know the Keystone Water Resources Center. I don't know it. So I guess what I'm asking is, is what they do duplicating anything that's already done? Is what they do assisting everything we need? Are they providing us with data that we actually use? Is it, I just don't know what they're providing us that we're using and the importance of it. So I guess that's what I'm looking for.
Well, I'll say that over the years, when they've come to us for the MS4-type things, and they use, put in the profession we call BMPs, Best Management Practices, they say, "If you do this, you get credit for it." But no one goes and actually monitors and sees if those actions are having any effect. And that kind of offends me, to just spend money on whatever they tell us to spend money on, but no one's giving us the feedback that, "Well, you actually did something." And so that's why, when I heard about this, I supported it, because I think it's important to collect data, so that we do know the answers.
So they're the only ones collecting this data? This is not duplicating anything else?
To the best of my knowledge.
Okay.
I mean, I'm sure that there are other water samples being collected at certain times by different organizations, but this is the only group I'm aware of that has these regular monitoring stations at these locations.
Because it seems like all sweeping. You know, it seems like it's a, so, but that's what I was wondering.
Could I inject that we would be questioned every part of the year, they'd come and tell us and show us what they're doing? To give us an idea?
I have no problem with them not telling me. After I read this, I'm okay with what they're doing. I don't need a full presentation of what they're doing. But I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't redundant, and it was providing us with information that we use and need, and that's all I really need to know.
Well, I think that, from what I'm reading here, they do, this supports the annual report or biennial.
Yeah.
So just, yeah, for as long as we get a report back on it.
Some kind of feedback.
Yeah.
So, go ahead.
It's all great that we have this letter. We don't really have anybody to interview, because nobody showed up that is involved in this, and that would have been really nice, because normally, when somebody makes a request, we either know about it, it's historic, but this just came out of the blue, and I have questions for them, and nobody's here.
I apologize, too. I did not invite them to come. They stated they had, the township had been funding them previously. Now, not since I've been manager. They made a comment in the email to me that they believe that we had been providing funding to them in the past.
Well, I think where it came from is, they were originally part of Clearwater Conservancy.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, they were really, that was the monitoring, the water monitoring under Clearwater Conservancy, and it looks like they broke off and started their own, called the Keystone Water Resources.
They sort of started when I was sharing the Water Service Commission, and they were totally volunteer group.
But does Clearwater Conservancy provide this information?
I think this information is available to anybody who requests it.
But does Clearwater Conservancy also do this research?
I don't know if they do or not, to be honest with you. I don't know much about this organization. Lost their letter.
I got it.
You wanted one?
Yeah, no, I had it here.
I mean, I kind of, I kind of like, how about this? I kind of like Frank's suggestion, is why do we have to take it out of the budget when we do have money available to make a donation? I would like to have them come to a future meeting and actually explain to us what they do, and then we can decide if we want to give them a donation or not. I know nothing about these people and what they do, and again, are they duplicating services? I mean, obviously Dennis knows a little bit about them, because they split off from Clearwater, but I'd like them to show up and tell us what they do in detail.
Yeah, I don't think we need a separate line at this point.
So if you'd like, well, I'll see, they can either come next month, or maybe in, maybe in February, January is the meeting.
I was going to say, December, December or February.
December or February. And I can ask them to come, and then if you decide you want to donate to them, you can just make a motion to do that, and we can do it.
Sir, I think they should come in December, so Bruce has to deal with it.
Okay. I'll see if they're available. I looked at their email. They've just said in the past that we had donated to the Water Resources Monitoring Project, which is what they run.
And I'm wondering if that was...
I don't know if there was a different name back then.
No, that's what it started out as.
Okay.
It's been that for twenty years.
Their email says that they lost touch with the township around COVID, so I don't know the last time it was in our budget.
I don't recall that at all, though.
I will ask them to come next month, or if they're unavailable in February, we can invite Bruce back.
Let's look and see if we ever done, let's look back and see if we donated to them, like, before COVID.
If we've lost them, they quit asking.
Okay.
Okay, so essentially, we're going to postpone that. Okay, next up. Township budget.
Board of Supervisors held several work sessions in recent weeks to finalize the 2026 Township budget. The budget should be tentatively approved, so that public review and comment period can begin. After tentative approval, the budget must be made available for inspection for at least twenty days prior to formal adoption by the board. Public hearing and formal adoption will take place at the December 8, 2025 Board of Supervisors meeting.
I move to tentatively approve the 2026 Harris Township budget and schedule a public hearing and formal adoption of the budget on December 8, 2025.
I don't second that.
Okay, I will suggest we hold on for just a second for our supervisor to get back, since this is the budget.
He just doesn't want to vote on it. Come on. We need final jeopardy music right now.
He's an old man. This can take a while sometimes.
He missed it. Motion adopted.
On one of my birthdays, fairly in the last few years, my boys made up a song to the tune of Soul Man, only it was Old Man, about me.
All right. We have a motion in a second to approve the budget.
Tentatively approve the budget.
Tentatively approve the budget. Comment? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. Motion passes. Okay. Request for input on the development of regional impact process, public park amendment process.
Capital improvement.
Oh, we got to do capital, too?
Yep.
They're separate, okay. Resolution 25-15 for the capital budget.
I'll make that motion.
Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, guys. Request for input on the development of regional impact process, public park and amendment process.
Center Regional Planning Agency is requesting feedback from the Center Region Municipalities on policy questions related to public sewer extensions to public parkland. In July of this year, the township submitted a letter to the COG Executive Director requesting that COG begin preparing for the future extension of public sewer to the Hess Field Softball Complex. This request was discussed at the August 7 Lucy Committee meeting and the October 9 Lucy Committee and CRPC meeting, where discussions centered on whether parkland should receive different consideration from other development requests. The CRPA is requesting feedback on the following questions. Does the municipality support establishing a policy that all public parkland may consider having access to public sewer infrastructure, if economically viable? Does the municipality support CRPA and the Lucy Committee developing an amendment to the regional growth boundary and sewer service area agreement to define criteria and a process for parkland to request an extension to receive public sewer? And/or does the municipality believe this discussion should be part of the comprehensive plan update and Act 537 Plan process? Copy of CRPA's request is included with the agenda, and the board should discuss the questions listed above and provide feedback, which staff will forward to the CRPA.
Yeah. If I look at this little chart they gave us about regional parks, there's only two outside the growth boundary in the sewer. That's Oak Hall and Hess Field. So as far as that goes, I've always believed that we should have sewer service wherever we build something. I mean, I think it's the most environmentally friendly way to take care of sewerage, and, you know, every time you build a sand mound or a septic system, you just wait for it to fail someday. So as far as that goes, I don't, and if somebody, and the cost prohibitive is what's going to run it. You know, somebody's not going to run sewer line ten miles to get their house on sewer. But if it gets close enough, they might. So I don't have a problem with this, and yes, I think it should be, whether we add it to the growth boundary or not, I think the sewer service to all our properties in the COG or regional, absolutely. I think they should be allowed to be on there.
In the case of Hess Field, Frank, the separation distance between Hess and the connector is probably about three-quarters of a mile.
Yeah, it's not that far. It's right at the top of the hill there.
Along forty-five.
Yeah, and like I said, I don't think we, I mean, if it's put a part of the Act 537, whatever way we got to do it, I think it's worth saying, yes, let's just allow that for sewer service. That's just my personal opinion, and I still say we can get sewer service down there for, all we're going to do is buy the pumping station, because if we tell Mr. Miller, "Look, we want beneficial reuse water down there. Oh, by the way, while you're putting that line in for free, put a sewer line beside it." That's my plan.
Item one indicates that we would be doing this for all public parkland. Is it all public parkland what we want to do, or do we want to do it for regional facilities?
I thought it would be all public parkland.
I think all.
Why would you limit it?
It does say "may consider." It's not like, it doesn't say it has to have, or it doesn't say anything.
Let's be realistic.
If economically viable.
There's the key. Okay, we can say it's authorized everywhere, but we might not have a big enough checkbook to put it everywhere. But every time we get enough money to do one, we shouldn't have to go back and go through the whole process. So I would sooner we say, "Hey, let's let them all do it now, and if economically feasible, when time comes, we do it."
How about, I mean, why do we limit it to parkland, publicly-owned facilities of any kind?
I think it's, I would agree with that. I would say, let's separate the growth boundary and the sewer boundary and get them apart. They've always been together. Get them apart, and if somebody wants to have sewer, and they want to pay to run it, run it. And if we start, someday, maybe not in my lifetime, but we're going to have to put a sewer plant on the other end of town, because growth is going that way. And sooner or later, we're going to have to go out there, because we can't keep pumping it back to, you know, down here to the mall. You know, sooner or later, there's going to have to be a new one out there.
Spread it out to the...
Yeah, so I would say, whatever. I'm just saying, I'm in favor of wherever we've got to put it. I think our sewer plant does a fabulous job of treating it, turning it into pure water, or good water, and repurposing it. I just think that, I'd like to see all our fire hydrants on that, if we could ever get it pressurized.
537 Plan is going to be redone in 2027.
Yes, I do that.
They're going to start.
It won't be done until probably 2030, 2030.
Forty, fifty, you know, whatever.
It is important. The sooner the better. We can get a sewer line to Hess Field, so we can get on with the, you know, finally finishing that facility the way we planned.
I think the comment I'm hearing from everybody is, right now, yeah, we want to, everything that we own, the public stuff, you know, we go ahead and put it out there for the parks and the regional parks and all that. The other part for the private and everything, then, that's a discussion for 537.
Yeah, I mean, adding sewer to a park doesn't impact the growth.
Right. Exactly.
We went through the same discussion when we banned the sewer line to the Discovery Church property.
Well, what's going, what's going... Well, what's going, what's going on with the Tussie Mountain?
We have not received their Development of Regional Impact application yet.
Okay.
Not sure where they're at in that process.
Okay.
Okay, so do we, do we, as I see these three questions, the third question is, do municipalities believe the discussion should be part of the comprehensive plan update and Act five thirty-seven plan? Which is more complicated, puts us way down the road.
Right, I'd sooner do it now, but, but if we do it now, that'll have to be part of the discussion at that point, won't it?
Yes.
Yeah. Do one and two and say yes to three?
Yeah, yeah, so they'll do one and two, and, and three will take care of itself.
Yeah, okay.
Because if we do one or two, it's gonna have to be when they do the comprehensive plan.
So, we're in support of one and two?
Sure.
I'll send that feedback to the board.
Resolution twenty-five dash sixteen.
So, we prepared an application for a local share account grant to fund the purchase of a regenerative air street sweeper. Grant request is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. LSA grants are funded by gaming, gaming revenues through the Commonwealth Financing Authority.
Thank you, College Township. Is there a match there for us?
There is no match required with an LSA grant, so this would cover one hundred percent of the cost, or it should cover one hundred percent of the cost of a regenerative air sweeper. We increased the price a little bit over what the quotes were this year, just to take into account inflation.
Are we gonna get it?
I hope so. That's the goal. We probably won't know until sometime late next spring. My understanding is it's May, they typically award.
I moved to approve Resolution twenty-five dash sixteen for all that stuff.
It also comes out of, and was forecredited because of cleaning salt, stuff off some streets.
Yeah, I'm not sure what credits we get, but it's, yeah, we also can clean out inlets with this as well.
I made the motion.
I second it.
Moved and seconded further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Managers' report.
Thought I was gonna have a simple managers' report this month, but it got a little lengthier than I thought, so I'm just gonna hit on a few items. First off, there is an item on here, or not on here, that I wanted to make you aware of. I did get an email from Peter Irish on the Planning Commission that he has resigned, so we will have an opening next year on the commission. I wanted to bring your attention to a few items. First was number two, and that's related to the Center Region Code Administration preparing their annual fee schedule. And they're curious if Harris Township is interested in adding an additional fee for rental permits, as is done in most other Center Region municipalities. I think the only one that doesn't do it other than us is Hefman Township. This fee is used by other municipalities to offset additional costs related to providing services to rental properties. And for the most part, it's about three to five dollars for most municipalities. I think the Burrows is much higher, but most others are in the three to five range. So, if the board is interested in considering an additional fee for rental permits in the twenty twenty-six fee schedule, we can inform CRCA of that and try to come up with a number we think is reasonable.
I have a question before we get going.
On our permit fee, that we're, we're going for the short-term rental? I think we, we did, what, two hundred and fifty, I think, is what you had on there.
That was what was proposed.
Right, well, that's so, we can only charge what we recoup for you, or what we spend to, to, to do that, to administer.
Correct. Fees have to be based on administration.
Would this be affected, affected to make that drop, or can we put this on and not have to worry about it?
This would, this would not impact that. This would be related to additional services that we typically provide for rental properties.
Well, let's do it. What the heck?
This is simplified per permit.
Per permit, correct, yeah. And I think we have around five to six hundred permits, so that gives you an idea of what, it's not gonna offset a lot, but it would help. And how that works is they collect it and then they forward it to the township.
It comes back to us.
It comes back to us.
In long summer?
Yes.
I'd say we do it.
We'll, we'll work on that for your twenty-six fee schedule, but I'll let CRCA know that we are planning to, if you're all agreeable, to do that, you know, kind of look into it as a staff and come up with a number. Okay, next item I had was number four. Back in twenty sixteen, the board began appointing three alternate members to the Planning Commission. These are non-voting members and could be used to meet a quorum if other members are absent. We recently discovered that the Planning Commission ordinance was never amended, nor were the bylaws to actually include alternates, which should have been done to formalize their role, and, you know, we've never actually used them to make a quorum, but if we had, it could have been problematic since they were never actually part of the commission. So, there has been a high rate of turnover amongst these alternate members, and attendance and participation has been pretty inconsistent, I would say overall. We have two terms that are expiring at the end of the year and one that's currently vacant. So, what, what I'm kind of wondering is, first off, we would recommend not appointing anyone to the, to the alternate role until we get the ordinance fixed. But I didn't know if the board wants to continue appointing alternates or not, if you feel that's, it, it has been somewhat successful at times. We've had people come on that have served and moved on to be regular members, but we've also had folks who get appointed that don't ever show up, or only show up maybe once or twice, and then, you know, every month when we call, there's, they're not available to attend, so.
It's nice to have a pool of potential people. They have, they have a deserved all that.
When was the last time we had a pool member out of the public, that we didn't have somebody from either the alternate or, or somebody in line because of that?
Are you asking, when have we ever used an alternate for a quorum?
No, no, no. When have we ever had, when have we not had an alternate when we had to put somebody up to the, up to the commission? In other words, the last couple of years, we've been, we've had somebody as an alternate that we could move up.
We have, I think, in the last couple of years. They, they were alternates that had probably been appointed a year before.
I, I think that, I think that that, having that ability to have somebody to move up, even if all of a sudden we don't have anybody and we gotta go out and look, I think the probability of having somebody's there, and it makes it a little easier for us. Plus, we all know the Planning Commission takes a little bit more time to get up to speed. So, if we're bringing somebody in fresh and cold turkey, you know, that, that, it's gonna hurt them for a while. So, I, I would sooner that we just, if we can keep the alternates, let's keep the alternates.
That's fine, and I, and I wanted to check before I started working on ordinance amendments. And also, I'll mention the Planning Commission's updating their bylaws, so knowing if the board's interested in that, they can update the bylaws.
We can let those guys update, update their own bylaws? Can you imagine what's gonna come out of that?
Well, we're hoping they're gonna be streamlined and simplified.
Oh, God.
planning commission?
Jeff's down there.
It'll take years.
My, my buddy Jeff's down there. I know what he's, I know his mind, I know how he thinks.
Well, I will work on an ordinance amendment for you, probably for next year, but I, as I mentioned, I just don't see a value in appointing anyone if it's not.
But there was a motion in the last E News Center.
Where is three twenty-two in?
We're soliciting, we're soliciting, yes, volunteers, and so, I don't know if everyone who's currently appointed is up for exploration is gonna want to.
Forty-five.
That's another matter, too.
That's forty-five.
The last thing I wanted to bring to your attention was the last item, number eight. And this is the Sustainable PA Gold Designation that we received many years ago, back in twenty eighteen. I started doing the updates since that designation expired, and we're being encouraged to recertify under the new program, but the new program has a lot of different criteria, I think, from what the last program had. So, I'm fine going about doing that. I didn't know, if you want to strive for anything higher than bronze, it looks like we'd have to do some additional policies to develop to get us there, as I noted here in my agenda language. So, or in my, my manager's report. So, I'm just curious, if you want me to pursue recertification at all, and if so, do you want to look at some of these additional policies and ordinances that we'd have to do to maybe achieve a rating higher than bronze?
Here, here's where I'm coming from on sustainability, and I think I wrote this somewhere in Senate. Every decision we made, at, at the township, even at the township level, we must consider sustainability, we must consider climate, we must consider all those things. So, why do we have to, why, why should we be, keep, you know, sending information and taking our time up to qualify so we can put a plaque up somewhere? We do it all the time. Why do we need a plaque? I guess that's my question.
Kind of agree with that.
Something you're gonna advertise?
That, yeah.
Yeah, so it sounds like we'd be qualified for bronze as it stands now.
Potentially. The, I saw, there are some criteria that says if you do not have this, you cannot achieve anything greater than bronze. So, I don't know that we'll still even get bronze, because I have to fill out all the, but when I saw that, I was like, well, last time we had gold, I think.
You, you, you fill it out, it's going to PML, right?
It's going to Sustainable Pittsburgh that administers it, I think, on behalf of PML.
I would send it to, I would send it to john.pml, and I would put on there, "How well do you like our membership?", and I'd send it down to them.
Don't know if that was part of the application process.
Well, that's what I would send. You can forward this on, but how well do you like our, our membership?
It's, it's worth it.
I think, I think it's worth reviewing what it is.
Yeah, oh, I have no problem with reviewing it.
See if there's anything in there that we think we ought to be doing. I don't know, is we, we need to jump through a hoop just to get an extra merit badge, but.
It's, it's like that sign that says.
You've got another merit badge.
You see yours, eh?
I got enough.
What that, what that sign gets, only, only if you see it on the inside of the building.
We have a sign out front.
But, you know, it's, it's a visible kind of thing, so.
And I'm happy to bring back a list of the things that we're potentially deficient in, and then see what the board's appetite is to address it. I just didn't want to spend time working on this if you were not interested in doing it, because it will take some time.
Oh, by the way, on that number seven with Chief Garner?
Yes.
Is he coming to our dinner?
Um, I'm not sure. I believe so.
If he is, if we were gonna give him something, that would be a great time to do it.
Yeah, I, well, I do have.
If we can't get it by then, that's, that's no problem.
Mr. Graham stopped in the other day. Bud offered to bring a, a, a similar gift to what was given to Chief King.
Okay.
He said he has another copy or something similar to what was given to Chief King, which I believe was a framed watercolor photograph of the village. So, he said he was gonna bring them by.
Oh, okay, the bigger one.
Yes, I'll need to follow up with Bud and see if he, if he, if he can still get that to us.
If he's gonna be there, that'd be a great time.
If, if he's not, I was gonna see if he'd be willing to come to the December meeting just for a quick thank you, and, or even in January, if he would just.
He told me he's coming.
He usually comes. I don't think, I don't think he's ever missed.
Well, I'll see if we can get that picture in time. That will be the, that will be the key. Talk to Bud.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else on the managers' report?
How'd you make out on number six?
Number six, which one's that one?
Yeah, well.
Uh, we haven't met with him yet.
Okay, there is, I say, I, I shuttle van people over there, and they, they all want the streets, the township to take care of the streets. Well, it gotta be done.
There's some complicating factors with that development, particularly that there's no cul-de-sacs for these little stubs of what are essentially private streets now. So, for us to take over the whole entire development, we would have no way to plow it without having to go down private roads or turn around in the middle of a street, which isn't ideal. But, it's something we're gonna need to, and, and also, there's a lot of outstanding things that need done, that we need to talk to the developer about.
Those things need to be completed.
Well, and that's part of the discussion is, you know.
What discussion? They need to be completed?
Well, if they're not done by a certain date, we wouldn't be willing to consider taking them, or we could always have an agreement with them that they have to be done by a certain date in the future if we want to take them now. I think the concern is, the folks out there probably want us to be plowing, get, I mean, there's folks out there that have been living there for ten years that have never lived along a township street. It's been a long time the developer has not finalized these improvements, and we are holding surety, you know, to get them done. So, in theory, the township could take that surety and go ahead and, and have the work done. Um, I, you know, it might be time for us to have sort of a, a frank discussion about either that gets taken care of by the state, or else that's what we'll have to do. But, like I said, we're gonna meet and talk about it and kind of list everything that is deficient, and make, make it clear what are, what would need to happen in order for this to occur.
Okay, number seven.
I'll move to approve the vouchers. Total of one hundred ninety-two thousand, eight hundred forty-four dollars and ninety cents.
Second. Sasha? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? No? Motion carries?
I'd like this last one, no.
I had a question. Ask a question. I had a my type.
That was my one, township.
Number thirty-seven-six. University Avenue Drive, Waste Water, Discovery Square? What is that?
Where is this?
Three oh seven six.
That, I believe, is just our, our sewer bill. I don't know what Discovery Square is, but.
That was the question. What is Discovery Square?
I'm not sure what that refers to. It might be something in Dwight's, you know, kind of.
Billing system?
Billing system, but yeah, that's just our regular, a hundred and twenty-one dollars is a quarterly bill for UAJ.
Oh, okay. I never, hadn't, hadn't seen that.
Don't know what Discovery Square is.
Uh, is it a huge building?
Oh, that might be. It might be Discovery. I wonder why it's square, though. I don't know. Probably Discovery Drive, yeah. Well, it sounds nice. We have Discovery Square out there. It's a fine place.
Well, I caught it.
Okay, COG Committee reports. Executive Committee set the agenda.
Before you get going there, I have a question, since I didn't get to make the COG meeting. How do we make out with restructuring of the committees?
They didn't really go into it.
No, uh, that's gonna be a, they thought they were gonna have it done by the end of the year, which is.
I agree with that.
So, we're gonna have a special session of the Executive Committee coming up to start putting some flesh on it and talk about some of the concerns that we've heard.
I sent you my thoughts.
You did, you did. And then it'll come back before the general forum after that, as a, as a discussion item. I can't see, and, you know, it's gonna be, it's gonna go into next year.
Can you, can you send that to me? No, he asked for comments. I sent my comments to him.
Yeah, and I will, I will note that, as Ben has noted, the bylaws say that we may appoint these committees. Those committees exist, but we don't have to populate them if we want to.
But what's the point in, I don't understand what the point is in getting rid of committees. I really don't.
There's, you know, here's, there are some people that just feel that, I go to a lot of committee meetings. And they wonder if particularly, you know, it could be streamlined. I, I have a suspicion that most people that sit on a committee view that committee as a valuable thing. Some of the arguments have been that, you know, we have a facilities manager, do we need a facilities committee? We have a human resources manager, do we need a human resource committee?
No.
We, my own case with parks, you know my opinion about the Parks Committee.
Those two committees, yeah, they're, I mean.
Hire.
Yeah, we hire people, but we still need to have oversight, and that's what the committee is all about, that elected officials have oversight. So, the, I mean.
Well, in the long run, the elected officials do have oversight. They may not have, because it has to go through the general forum. They may not have the intimate oversight of being involved with it on a month-to-month basis.
Right.
All right, this, but this discussion right here is why it's not gonna happen overnight.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, my, my experience with human, human resources committee is like, there, there's been a lot of really good input from committee, committee members over the years,
because we're looking at it a little differently, maybe, than the managers, or, you know, just more minds can make, make better outcomes.
You get the diversity of opinion when you have people sitting on the committee, rather than a manager.
Right. I don't, I don't understand the.
I neither, so.
I wanna know what happened to that study that we funded for tens of thousands of dollars for facilities, that I've never heard anything about in the meeting, not one thing. But with that study, what happened to that study?
That's all right. So, Parks Capital Committee did not meet. Parks Governance Committee is plotting along. It's good, that too is gonna be a, a process, because once you rewrite the bylaws and then you have to set, we're, we're now talking about the relationships between, what should the relationships be between the various committees involved with parks? And so, that's, I can't report any significant progress, so I think, you know, things are moving forward slowly. The Park Authority met, and there were two items on our list. One is reviewed the plans for the Whitehall Road Regional Park Concession Pavilion Bid. There's been drawings for it. It essentially is gonna look like what is up at, at Oak Hall, yeah.
Oak Hall.
Yeah. So, Whitehall, Whitehall concessions will be similar to what's at Oak Hall, in terms of the kind of services they offer.
Oh, okay.
Uh, with three-seasoned pavilion. The other item that was, came forth was if the, from the school district, was for the Park Forest Pool Parking. They would like to agree to ask us to paint numbers on the parking places, in the parking places. These would be like a two-by-two. These would be like a two-by-two number or designation. The purpose is for, if there is something that they need to evacuate the building, say there's smoke in the building, that the students would be able to go out, and it would be designated by the homeroom, so students would know where to gather, and parents and the people at the school would know where to find them. The school district will pay for the painting, they'll pay for the maintenance of the, of the painting, they'll pay for the removal of the painting and the painting of the latter time. It will not affect the stalls, the stalls are still there, the stalls are still painted.
Is this for temporary while they're building a new building, or what is this? Or is this just something, I mean, they don't know where to go when the fire alarm are right now?
But they want them to go to a designated spot for each group, so there's just not these several hundred or how many kids milling around, but, you know, this homeroom is here, and this homeroom is here, so we know where you're supposed to be, not this.
What if your section's on fire, I guess you don't go there?
This is outside.
I know it is outside, I'm just saying. Well, I, you know, I, I have no problem with that, but I'm just, it, it amazes me in today's time, that with all the, the active shooters and everything that's going on in school, that they don't already have this set up. That's my, that's what my concern is. What, what, what happened in twenty twenty-five, and now, you mean it hasn't been set up?
I think we should go to the next school board meeting.
Why, we keep voting the same people in, keep getting the same stupid shit out of them.
Wow, you go, Frank.
Well, it's true. I say the truth, I don't mess around.
All right. Mr. Wilson, Human Resources.
Did not meet, and neither did Climate Action.
We're just flying, right? Now we know why we wanna get rid of committees.
Just because they didn't have anything on the agenda.
Neither one of mine met.
Okay.
By the way, we would be, this Thursday, Thursday mornings are meeting, so I don't have anything new to report there. Connector project, I think we're still waiting on the next part of the NEPA. When it gets in, there's gonna be public things again. MPO, we meet the end of this month, so I'll have, I'll have something on that next month, we meet the end of this month.
Facilities Committee didn't meet, and Public Safety is Wednesday.
What'd you do in facilities?
They didn't meet.
Oh, didn't meet, I thought you said it had me.
Been a late month for all of us.
Okay, anything else for the good of the COG?
I don't, we could prolong this meeting, because we only have one more.
I make a motion adjourned, too.
Okay. We are adjourned.